Having to short sell their property, inventory ballooned and demand dropped off. And that's a recipe for declining prices. Right now, what we're dealing with is what was an underlying strong economy, record home equity for borrowers. And what will still be, even if it's thirty, sixty, ninety days, a relatively short duration event. Now, the key is I talked about before, is what does, what do employment levels do after this? But in the short term, we've learned a few lessons from two thousand nine. And there are challenges created by those. But government backed loans are already allowing for forbearances. And we'll talk about that a little bit later. So that if you can't pay, make your mortgage payment, you have the opportunity to forbear that mortgage. And, you know, not put you in default. So that should lead to a lower level of a certainly holding off on foreclosures till we're through this and see kind of what we're left with on the other side, unemployment, job and economy wise. So, you know, with all foreclosures on hold, with forbearances in place as a matter of right, with record home equity, while we may see on the other side of this, some sellers that need to sell to cash out the equity or downsize or move or something along those lines or have other needs. Right now, I don't expect us to see the foreclosures or short sales or ballooning of inventory that we saw in two thousand nine that led to a decline in prices. Remember, you've got to have transactions at lower prices to affect prices. So, right now, even as we're stopped, that doesn't mean prices are going down because there aren't homes selling at lower rates under a distressed sale type scenario like we saw in two thousand nine. So our hope is that we avoid that and that we keep small businesses alive. Obviously, we keep all businesses alive and that we not necessarily, no one expects us to pick up where we left off when this is over. There will be a long period of time to get everything restarted. But that we have fundamental, strong base to return to that we didn't have in two thousand nine. Just to finalize, kind of close that loop on forbearances, because somebody asked there was a balloon payment going on. If you do get questions and we will put out some guidance on the forbearance program for you to share with your clients. Forbearance program is not mortgage forgiveness. Forbearance basically allows you to put that payment on hold temporarily. Now, we'll see the evolution of these programs. But right now, these programs, if you forbear, put your mortgage on hold for thirty, sixty or ninety days, the servicers are asking for a balloon payment at the end of that. So while you're having some trouble difficulty now, maybe you can't make the mortgage payment. But if you get that thirteen hundred dollar check from the government or whatever it may be for your individual circumstances, you might be able to make it at that point. So you go, you forbear your mortgage for April and May. They're going to want you to catch that up once that forbearance period ends. So it's not mortgage relief, it's not mortgage forgiveness. It's really just puts it on hold and doesn't solve any of the long term problems if you're long term unemployed. Those were going to have to be other issues that can be dealt with later. It simply means if you can't make this month's payment, you can have a period of forbearance while everybody kind of figures out what's going on. But it's not a magic bullet, it's not free money, it's not debt forgiveness. You know, it is an issue and it doesn't necessarily apply to all of them. So mortgage servicers are still working through that. Let's talk a little bit about operationally for us. Again, just like each of you as a company, we are planning for the worst and hoping for the best. It's our job to remain physically strong, to continue to serve our clients and our agents. But it's also important to us to protect jobs. And, you know, respect the valued commitments of the nearly hundred and twenty plus or so, plus or minus employees that we have. None of this is anyone's fault. In two thousand nine, it may have been a little easier to blame the banks or blame Wall Street or blame any of those things. And I'm not getting into political debates and anything else. I just meant, none of this is anyone's fault. And so our goal is certainly to put our people first and try to do as much as we can to help everyone move through this process. So what does that look like operationally on our end? On our end with closing still strong, we are continuing to do what we can to facilitate those closings and to continue to prepare for May and June, which is probably going to be when, you know, closing significantly drop off. We are like each of you at home, watching all of our expenses. And, you know, it's not a bad lesson, even in a good market, to eliminate what's not essential and to evaluate everything that we do. We have gone to a thirty-two hour work week across the board for all of our employees. And we have done that in order to protect jobs. So we have not done any layoffs of full-time employees. We have had a couple of reductions in, in some hourly staff, but we've not had any reductions of full-time or reductions of full-time employee positions. But we have gone to thirty-two hour work weeks, which does result in a twenty percent cut in pay across the board, including our leadership team, myself and everyone. But that's allowed us to preserve jobs and have more runway moving forward. So that as our needs and sales and everything return, that we'll be ready. And I really, and I know a lot of them are on this call, I really want to give a shout out to our staff and the offices and our departments who are working from home, who are coming in on every other day, who are doing whatever needs to be done to keep us strong and to continue to serve you and your clients. Under city orders, our City of Charleston offices and Mount Pleasant offices are closed to the public. All offices are accessible to agents with your FOB. It's kind of timely that we did the all access in the last quarter. I appreciate IT for getting that implemented. And, you know, they are available to you during your, with your FOB. But Mount Pleasant and City of Charleston offices are closed to the public. In our North Area Offices, Daniel Island, Johns Island, those offices are still open with a single staff person, staffed alternating days to again protect them and protect you. We've sent out some memos before, but for agents, I would encourage you obviously to only go into the office as necessary for your own safety. You know, to drop things off, pick things up and do things you need. But, you know, not to linger there so that, you know, we all do our part in continuing to protect our fellow coworkers, our staff and everyone else and, and practice and engage in that social distancing. Same here at Salt Point. And we've probably got a little less than ten people working on a daily basis in accounting. There are several of us here now, we're all in different rooms on this conference to make sure that we're appropriately spaced apart. IT and, IT is mainly remote unless it's here today and doing what needs to be done. I think marketing has one person in at a time, making sure that they still respond to your needs. If you have sign or other supplier or other thing needs and they'll be delivering those to the front desk at your office. At, you know, on a, you know, probably deliveries once a week or so. Rose is actually staying at home, we want to make sure she stays safe and, and moving in and out of offices on ongoing basis. Not only is it not as necessary right now, but, you know, it just doesn't make a lot of sense. We've gotten some questions on what does, how do we define essential services? What should we be doing? You know, what the governor said yesterday is that basically people should either be or at home or at work. You know, so, you know, that continues the not really mulling about kind of social distancing that we've talked about. It is not business as usual. While real estate, legal and financial services have been deemed essential, certainly by the cities that have done stay shelter in place orders. We are certainly not business as usual, both for your safety, our client's safety and our vendor's safety, you know? We are not doing open houses as a company, obviously. When we talk about essential services, you know, someone has no place to live come the end of April and they have to buy a house, that may be considered essential. If you're closing something that's pending and somebody's under a legal obligation to close on a house, that can obviously be deemed essential. We've gotten questions about, I have a client that wants to list, is now really a good time? And the answer really would be no. Their showings are down dramatically. There's a lot less people looking. Unless they have a true financial hardship and have to sell now, it's going to be hard to see how that's going to be deemed essential. Same as when we talk about photographers. I understand the desire to say, well, I really want to make sure my house presents virtually as good as possible. But in this world and this right now, you're probably better, if you have something that essentially has to go on, to take a couple of pictures with your cell phone. We're coming, we're coming up with some solutions that might provide you some editing services or other things that can help that and post those. But I don't think we're really being responsible to our sellers or to our vendors or other people to say, great, I want you to be inside this house for, you know, ninety minutes shooting a Matterport tour or something along those lines. I mean, again, there is a difference between essential and business as usual. And we want to make sure we're both protecting our clients, our vendors and the public. Because again, you know, somebody is doing a showing, you know, that you're really in contact and interaction with every person that person's been in contact and interaction with and, and bringing them through an occupied home. I know some people have drawn a distinction through some vacant homes. But then the questions are, what are we doing in between those showings and other things? So we really want to limit the activity to what's essential, what's necessary, whether that's in the office, whether that's showings and other things along those lines. Why don't we, I'm going to throw it to Dave Sansom to talk about the payroll protection program and unemployment assistance and some of those things that are out there. We don't have all the answers to all the questions. But I'm going to throw it to Dave and, and he'll share with you what we do know. Dave?
Sure. Morning, everybody. Glad to see you on the call. The two primary options that are out there for assistance for Realtors, and we'll be getting an email out today with FAQs from NAR and a press release from the state on both of these. The two primary paths are the payroll protection program inside the CARES Act. And that is essentially a forgivable Small Business Administration loan obtained through a bank equal to two and a half months' worth of your last twelve months' earnings capped at a hundred thousand dollars, meaning that if you made two hundred thousand dollars in the last year, they cap it at a hundred thousand dollars and then figure out what two and a half months of your earnings would have been at a hundred thousand dollars if you had earned that much or more. And you apply for this through a relatively simple application. Application itself is pretty simple. What we don't know is one, well, what's, what we don't know is what will the banks require in terms of documentation to back up your income? Each bank appears to have been left to its own devices, whether it's at the company level or the individual level, to come up with its own documentation requirements. So that's challenge number one that we see. This email that I'm going to send out later today will have the application attached to it. And then within the next two days, you will get from your OA, one of your OAs, what your average monthly income was for the last twelve months. So if you choose to pursue this application, you should have the information you need from us to do it. You will have to apply through a bank and this appears to be the part that's going to be tricky, trickiest. There is a know your customer requirement placed on the banks by the Small Business Administration, meaning that you can't walk into a bank you've never done business with apply through them and execute as easily as you would otherwise. The last official written guidance that I saw on that, which may change, is that you have to have a loan through this bank with the idea being that, that bank would have some idea of your financial history to be able to do it. If that doesn't work, if you don't have a loan with anybody, then where you do your deposit is probably, your deposit business is probably your next best bet. Because those folks also technically know who you are. Unfortunately, at this point, there's not a lot more help that we can give you with that. That, that bank part of it and where to apply is going to end up, at least for now, being largely up to you to determine. But between the email that I'm going to send out later today and the email that you'll get from your OAs in the next forty-eight hours, that should have as much as we can give you to get started on the process. And independent contractors can April tenth, which is this Thursday. So our intent is to try to have all this information in your hands before the tenth. The second path is to unemployment assistance through the state of South Carolina. There is not that much information on this piece of it. I spent four hours and forty some odd minutes thanks to the little pain meter on my phone. I could tell you the exact amount of time on hold the other day trying to get through to the unemployment department at the state to ask some more specific questions. Also cannot find information on the website. But I do have a press release from them and some general guidance that came out from SCR that I will include in that email. The main open question in my mind, as far as an independent contractor is concerned as it relates to the unemployment piece, is I think you're going to have to prove some kind of a loss applied unemployment. So if your income isn't currently down versus what it has been historically, then I don't think you're going to be able to, to, I don't know, I haven't seen, I haven't seen the guidelines, but I have a hard time envisioning that you'd be able to qualify. Having said that, there is a number that will be in this email that is the, the, the number that we're supposed to call to find out if we do qualify. And at this point between Carolina One and SCR, that's the best information we're able to give you. The other thing that I would say is that follow your emails from Nick Chromitis at SCR. They've done a very good job communicating all of this to this point. I know we've been inundated with COVID information in general and it's easy to skip over a lot of this stuff. But they have definitely done their job on the advocacy side in terms of getting what good information they can in our hands as quickly as they can.
Thanks, Dave. So a couple of key points from, from what Dave had said. For individuals under the payroll protection program, that application starts Friday. So, you know, be prepared. Dave, did you talk about what we're going to send them?
I did. Just a couple of things I see on the side and the questions. Any FDIC insured bank is going to have the ability to take these loans. So questions about credit unions and these different things. It all, it's, the answer is going to be generally yes. The bank should be able to, whatever bank or credit union you're dealing with should be able to take the application. So this is opened up further than a typical Small Business Administration loan is. And question about the amount of time involved, the bigger issue is going to be when do they run out of money? So theoretically, could you make an application in thirty days or in two weeks? Sure. Fifty billion dollars set aside for this. And each bank, as I understand it, is given some allotment of that money that they can land out. The question is going to be when those banks, you know, run out of their allotment or the global pool of three hundred and fifty billion dollars goes away. You know, I, I suspect that that's going to happen sooner rather than later.
We would encourage you to apply on Friday with the information that you'll get from us. It's, you know, if you made up to a hundred thousand dollar amount, it's a little over twenty thousand dollars if you do two and a half times that monthly amount. Now, just so we have some kind of common sense understanding of what's going on. In order to try now, nothing's perfect on these programs. I read somewhere that a program like this, the guidance and everything would probably take about a year for implementation. Last Friday was a week since the statute, since you, since the act had been passed. So obviously, things aren't as buttoned up as they normally would have been. But what we're talking about is a situation where the individual banking institution is going to be vetting these loans. You don't just get to walk in and say, oh, I have a hundred and fifty employees down the street and I'd like a bunch of money. And so that's why they came up with the know your customer requirement, that it's got to be a bank that you bank with. So that those people allegedly can know or at least have some history with you somewhere. That then led to the requirement that they needed someone to have a loan with them. Because obviously, if you just have a checking account, they might not have any relationship with you. But if you have a loan, that at some point in the past, they will have gotten your financial statement, your tax returns, other things like that, and be able to easierly, more easily verify, oh, yes, this is a business we work with. They have a line of credit, we get their financials on an annual basis. So we can do some independent vetting on this application that then the local bank or lending institution sends on to the SBA. Once that happens, the loan is actually funded by the local bank or institution, not by the SBA. So that time period is a lot shorter. The question is going to be, as Dave said, where do independent contractors and solo practitioners fall on the list of priorities when there are going to be other small businesses or people with large number of employees out there? And, you know, what, how does that work? If the money runs out, does Congress authorize more? You know, in what order are people going to be responded to? You know, at a bare minimum, we recommend that you, you know, submit an application on Friday. Again, these loans are forgivable if they are used for payroll and you don't lay yourself off. If you have a paid assistant, make sure that you're aware of what requirements there are on the forgivable nature. If you use any of that payroll or you plan on letting that person go or anything along those lines. So, you know, a lot of this is still fluid and obviously in process. And we will guide you in any way that we can. I would recommend on Facebook that you, there's a button you can click to know when Nick Chromitis is live and you'll get a notification when he's live. He's been on a great job for SCR Resources of doing regular updates. And a lot of the information that we're forwarding you, just be honest, is coming from them. They're going to be more subject matter experts on this and we'll, we'll go for there. I just saw one question going away and somebody said, according to my financial, I may not likely qualify for the SBA loan. On the small business side, there is no qualification. You know, one of the ways in which they got this money out was not to show. Now, unemployment is different than the Small Business Payroll Protection Program. On the Payroll Protection Program, which they did make independent contractors eligible, as Dave's talked about and will be in the information he's forwarding out today, there are not qualifications. Qualifications are only that you made X dollars in the last twelve months and you've got to validate that. But you don't have to show a hardship, you don't have to qualify, you just have to apply. And so it is different than how that will work. And it's not necessarily income after expenses, you can use your W-2. And that's what David talked about, will provide you your last twelve months' average income. It's not your W-2 based on two thousand nineteen year end. It's your last twelve months and we'll be providing that to you. And it's not just net income, so it'll be your last twelve months, ten ninety-nine income times two and a half. And that's what you can do for under that. The ten thousand dollar SBA loans are different program than we're talking about here. It is your income after your splits, not your gross commission income, but your earnings as a ten ninety-nine agent, which is what accounting and your OAs are working on getting out to you. You know, I know Kim's on this call and I'm thinking about, you know, Charlotte, on your S corp, yes, you would be able to apply and you would be able to use a different factor based on the fact that you, assuming you still have a paid assistant that you can do that on. So if you're an LLC or an S corp, you still would be able to do that. And your time period would actually start last Friday, so you want to go ahead and do that quickly. I know Kim Shelman's on this call and I'm thinking about doing some other calls. We're going to have one of these each week at the same time. So, and while this one, we're going to have, we obviously spent a little bit more time, we're going to finish each one by eleven. While this one, we spent a little more time, maybe with me on my soapbox and talking a little bit more maybe about some of my personal things. We're going to do some where we'll have some guests as well. And maybe have Kim Shelman take a section on mortgage in more detail. Maybe have Eric do a little bit of Q and A on the title side and go through that way. The mortgage market is still working, but has challenges. Remember, most mortgage loans, even if they're serviced by the originator, like we service our own loans at Carolina One Mortgage, those loans are sold off. And a lot of investors are a bit leery right now for several things. One, does the borrower have a job and is the borrower likely to keep their job in the short term? So we have already seen changes. We've already seen changes in mortgage requirements of employment verifications the day before or the day of closing. But we've also seen some challenges in people closing on loans and then immediately forbearing that loan under the program. So their loan can be done and then immediately put on hold. And that's got some investors skittish, rightfully so. That's especially true in the jumbo market, which, which is having extreme challenges right now on individual circumstances. Talk to your in-office loan officer and they can help guide you through what options might be there for your buyers, depending on price point, depending on what options they're doing. We have a little more flexibility on the government backed loans because those aren't investor done like the jumbo loans, but jumbo loans are having struggle right now. Now, again, back to Bridget's question with oh nine, unlike some of the challenges, unlike some of the challenges that we had in oh nine, where it was based on fundamental weakness, we do expect that a lot of these investor jumbo and other programs will come back once things are more stable. So we're hoping this is just a momentary type issue. But again, there are lots of challenges out there. There was even a news story last week about how, at least in the downturn, mortgage rates were near zero. Not understanding the difference between what the Fed had done on liquidity and the Fed's fund rate, which does lower interest rates on equity lines and other things and mortgage rates. Right now, mortgage rates aren't all that low because again, supply and demand, a lot of refis were put in the books when, when rates did go down. And staffing issues, they still have to process all of those. So it's kind of like toilet paper right now, that, you know, there's kind of a weird mix on supply and demand. So I had somebody ask a question, is now a good time to refi? And the truth is, it might be better to sit, sit tight for a little while, rates aren't going to go up anytime soon. Even as we come out of this and maybe wait till that purchase demand drops off and it will be a little bit better time, you know, to refi then. As a company, Carolina One Mortgage is and always is focused on purchase money mortgages. And they're always going to be put foot first, so we can continue to service our clients and our agents. Had a couple of different questions about things along the lines of showings, attending closings and things like that. You know, I'm probably going to defer some of those things on the, on the closings to the closing attorneys. Some are doing one party at a time. Some attorneys are doing power of attorney only. As per the memo, and I want to thank our partner Southern First, they have waived all fees. And, and these are some of the things that we're going to take out of this crisis that will long-term help our business. But they've waived fees on incoming wires, so you can have your commission check wired in. So basically, you know, you'll be able, you know, to get the closing statement from the attorney. You know, review it, I would still recommend something like Google Hangouts or Zoom. So you can review it in person with your client, at least in virtual person. So you can put the closing statement on the screen, you can go through it with your client remotely, making sure they understand the numbers, they understand everything's correct. And then the parties can individually go to the closing office or use POA, depending on the individual attorney for that closing. And then you can have your check wired in. So, you know, that again, makes sense in that the closing can still happen. in that the closing can still happen, but we can take reasonable steps for smart social distancing. When you look at showings that have to take place, you know, we're probably back in the, we're probably in the days now where it makes sense to take separate vehicles, to make sure you sanitize your hands, to make sure you're wiping off doorknobs and surfaces and other things and maintaining that appropriate distance should you have to participate in a showing. You know, I said briefly on the wires that that's one of the things that my guess is we'll incorporate long after this is over. We've said many times before, and I think we talked about it a lot at the trade show, that there's been a lot of technology in real estate. And there'd even been some people who talk about technology replacing what we do. And I want to make very clear that I don't see that as a threat. That doesn't mean technology is not important. That doesn't mean that we'll continue not continue to invest in equipping our agents with the best technology out there. It doesn't mean that technology isn't going to change how we do what we do. Technology will make us better. You know, a central lock box is smarter than an old combo lock box. You can tell who's been in. You can limit access. That code doesn't get as far. But it doesn't replace what we need to do. I've heard a lot of people say, oh, in the future, six months from now, a year from now, people will just buy all their houses virtually. I don't believe that. At the end of the day, to quote Steve Murray, real estate is still a highly complex, relatively infrequent transaction, and the cost of making a mistake is huge. For most of our clients, it is their largest single investment in their life. And it's only something they do on average every eight years. We are essential, not in a government standard way, but to that process. And by connecting with our clients and helping meet their needs in good times and in bad. You know, nothing is going to replace that. Now, are we going to change how we do some things? Absolutely. Are there lessons that we're all going to come out of this? I mean, I think we'll probably have, I'm just guessing, the lowest flu season ever. Because everybody's going to be so attuned to washing their hands and being respectful and, you know, maybe replacing this, you know, just things that we should keep in our lives at all at all time and take the best from this. But I don't think the real estate agents are going to be replaced by cameras or virtual lock boxes or other things, because the people who say that are the people who still think that a Realtor's job is to drive their client to the house and use their lockbox key to open the door and fill in the blanks on a contract. And for the Realtors who have do were have been doing that, that's not a Realtor who gets a full fee or a full commission. Those are people that were doing things back in the MLS book days when we still had control of the information. Those days are gone and those people's jobs probably are at risk. But for those who are counselors to their clients, who are meeting with their clients on a semi annual basis, talking about what's their homes worth, who's not allowing their client to rely on Zillow, but actually sitting down and providing that real expertise. Technology is just a tool to how we do what we're doing. But we will look for those lessons in this. And we've even had that as a management team. Could some of our meetings be Zoom meetings to to save time from driving to Salt Point? Are there things that we don't have to do face to face? Never forgetting the people, never forgetting the things that are critical that we will continue to do. You know, I love the engagement of five hundred people on a Zoom call. But even if you talk about things like offices and sales meetings and caravans and other things, those things are important and those will come back. Humans are social creatures. And that's important. But we will definitely make adjustments as to how we go through things. Bridget has on there, remember going to the trade show, laugh out loud, miss those days. Well, well, we'll see. We've we've got a, we've got a date on hold in August and if something's safe, it'll be a great way to get back to work. But obviously, if not, then we'll revamp how we do that and in a safe way that allows us to continue to build and prosper and be better off from the synergies of having all of us together, then we would in the, you know, in the old days. Title, just as a quick update. Title still goes on. The title companies have, oh, I see my little niece in the bottom corner now. So I've got everybody there. Hey, Lysy Lou. But title continues to move forward. Title companies have made adjustments on ensuring searches that don't go back forty years, allowing things to be done virtually, the title title recording offices, even if the county offices are closed, are still open. And closings are still happening on an ongoing basis. So right now, same with insurance, right now, those services are moving forward. Master on accounting department providing wiring instructions, just have your your closing attorney contact Missy. Most of the closing attorneys at this point already have the wiring instructions. They'll provide them actually direct to the closing attorney's office for security purposes. Most of them already have them, but if they don't have them, they can contact Missy and she'll go forward on that. Chrissy Rowl had a question about snap mail. So not aware of any changes to that. On the Visimail program, we did email out all the Visimail subscribers for sixty days. We're going to One Piece during the month, which will be the newsletter and an article relevant to how the coronavirus is impacting our local real estate market. And some related information along those lines, but not doing a postcard over the next sixty days. That will lower the cost commensurately and save agents some money as well over those next sixty days. Plus, it is a great time and hopefully we have a little bit extra time to make sure that you reach out to your clients and have that face to or voice to voice or Zoom to Zoom. I don't know what counts as face to face anymore. Contact with them on an ongoing basis as well as writing your personal notes and still doing all of those things. Lolo is still going out, but they have extended the dates for redemption to a hundred and twenty days. They actually had one of their higher redemption months in March. Depending on duration, we're going to look at things and see you know, where we go on that. But they have extended them out. A lot of local vendors kind of liked as well, actually action them to keep that going and and keep us top of mind and in front of their people. But we'll work through some of those things on individual basis to make sure the clients are receiving the value of what they get. It's another great chance to reach out to them. New construction, build time affected, probably something we'll follow up on with Will and Chris in new homes. Construction, a lot of construction is still going forward. So, you know, the question really would be is, again, depending on duration, do we end up with something that you know, do we end up with something that delays permits and ends up with a lag later? But right now, we're expecting new construction to go forward. You know, but there is no question, there are probably limitations on getting homes ready for sale and certainly would check with your new homes lit buyer, new homes builder, if you've got something pinned it. Will just chimed on that they've not had any slowdown on construction new homes. So they're still moving forward as normal and building those homes and lots of things like that. If you if you ordered marketing brochures, they will be delivered to your office probably once a week and left at the front desk or in that area so that they don't need to distribute them. If you've got something that's timely that you really need sooner than that, just coordinate call marketing. They're still answering the phone. And you can arrange to have it picked up or we'll figure something out.
Can I stop you on that one?
Yes.
What we had communicated, I think, two or three times last week was that those things would office open. Did we change that?
Oh, I'm sorry. I guess the ones that were closed, you're correct. I'm sorry. I wasn't thinking about the ones that are that are that are closed. We'll we'll be on the offices that are closed. You're correct. So I need to update that with marketing. On the offices that are closed in the city or Mount Pleasant, we'll be delivering to them to the to the the open reporting office, right, which is Salt Point for the city and Daniel Island from Mount Pleasant.
It's Daniel Island from Mount Pleasant. We never really designated one for the the city because there are other offices around them that are open. So, you know, we 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 need to iron that piece of it out.
Okay, we'll look at that. As far as the North Area offices go, they would still take it to the North Area offices. You know.
Would still go to Maybank.
Right, absolutely. AR right now, there's there's been a question. She had this AR, AR is is being billed. It's been collected at closings and still cleared on credit cards, I think in thirty day increments. You know, obviously, it's important to watch all expenses as to what we're incurring. But, you know, if you have an individual circumstance, talk to your broker. But I mean, right now, those are you know, continuing as per the guidance that we've sent out. So let's see, it's about ten fifty six. So I don't know if there are any last minute questions. I'm hoping that everybody found this informative and helpful. I think it's critical at this time for you guys to stay connected, not only to your sphere. And when I talk about being connected to your sphere and calling your clients, you don't need to mention real estate. I I'm not saying make sure you prospect for business while you've got times at home. That that's not what I'm saying. We've made a concrete decision as a company to be a relationship selling business. And today, more than ever, relationships matter and relationships are important. And that's why our clients rely on us and your clients rely on you. So when I talk about contacting your sphere and being in touch with your center of influence, that's not about, hey, when this is over, I'm going to sell you a house, right? That's just checking in. That's talking to them and seeing how they're doing, how they're dealing with this. We all have friends, coworkers, peoples whose spouses have lost their job. You know, whose kids have lost their job, hoping that it's only temporary, hoping they'll get that job back in thirty or sixty or ninety days. And that's concerning. What's happening to the value of my home may be a legitimate question that somebody brings up. When I'm talking about contacting your sphere, I'm just talking about being in flow with people and connecting. Now, we had an agent last week that made five of those calls and one of them said, hey, I got a house I want to buy and I've already found it. So there can obviously be some benefits to that on the business side and there's nothing wrong about that. But it's the people that come first. And not only our clients, but we too need that connection. So I strongly recommend you log in Monday and Friday mornings at nine to Java with Johns. I recommend you guys are at your sales meeting. Most of you are. I was at one the other day that I think had as many people logged on as there were agents in the office. So I'm going to have to figure out how that happened. But that you log into your sales meetings Thursday mornings. We're going to have these calls Tuesday morning at ten. IT's got lots of different training on different tech tools, how to set up a Zoom meeting, how to set up a, you know, Google Hangouts, how to use A B C. You know, if you're not up on some of those DocuSign or other things where technology can help you, this is a great chance to try to do that. Stay connected and all the way you can. My wife had a virtual happy hour with some of her girlfriends and and based on the noise from upstairs when I was downstairs, they had plenty of fun. Hanging out for a couple of hours upstairs, even though they couldn't be with one another in person. And so, you know, I I think those things are important. I I think, you know, if we start with a prayer and end with a quote from Buddha. Buddha said that every morning we are born again. What we do today is what matters most. And, you know, I think we all have the opportunity to do something today to make today matter as opposed to waking up when this is over and saying we got through it. I don't want to just get through it. You know, we have to live each day until we cross that bridge and and then we'll adjust with the realities on the ground at that time. So I I sincerely appreciate all between four hundred and fifty and five hundred of you being on this meeting for the last hour. I hope everybody has a great day and I'll see some of you at your sales meeting on Thursday. And I'll see some of you at Java with Johns on Friday morning. Hey, Vita. My son's at school. So thank you guys very much. And if you did miss any part of this, signed on late or just are really, really bored and want to watch it again. It will, it has been recorded. It will be on the Intranet. See one rose so that you can watch it at that point. Also, all the old Java with Johns are. So if you can't get enough Java with Johns on Monday and Friday mornings, but you're a little bit behind. You can watch all the prior ones Tuesday and Wednesday morning or prior to your sales meeting on Thursday. So those are also on C one rows. Continue to send us your questions. We want to make sure we provide you with timely information as we continue to react to the situations we're presented with. First and foremost, be safe and we'll see you soon. So thank you.